There's a list of providers here that other municipalities have, we can go with one of these.
Can you do?
That's my question.
Yes, we can. How do you know what they're gonna charge you, Joe? You can't put somebody off of this without even talking to them.
Standard rate is 6% cap. If I may, there's a good one in the city mill, the Men's Insurance, he was doing city mill, he does my home town commercial township. I know him, you know, he would be a good one, I'm almost 100% sure.
Billable as Hardinburg Insurance.
I mean, just throwing it out, you know.
You know what, it all comes down to not doing homework. I'm not reading or calling the home. It sits in the mailbox for 30 days and nobody knows what's going on. So then it's everybody else's fault.
I will say, I'm sorry, it's out of my box.
Okay.
The same thing, no homework. And over and over and read it and read it and look at it.
We have, we have.
It's not like we're not doing our part.
You're refusing to go with my recommendations.
That's right.
I'm refusing to go with my recommendations. I'm doing my job, I clearly served you. And the more we're fighting here, the more it seems kind of obvious that there's a conflict of interest. Otherwise, you wouldn't be fighting this hard.
I'm too bad, nobody's nice to me about quite. Trying to come to some kind of a conclusion here.
Okay, we have seven months left of the year, let's just continue to stay with Hardinburg, they've done our city well for all these years.
Really, huh?
And let's just continue, and we will revisit this.
I doubt that. I doubt that.
I don't want to be without insurance.
I want to do this over again, I'm gonna nominate Hardinburg Insurance for our next consultant, I'll make the nomination.
Second.
Chair, you want to make a motion?
No motion.
I'll second.
I'll pick that up later.
And I'd like to get some assurances here. If this nomination goes through, that in the future, any nomination for any position will be based on the facts and not on personal opinions. That's all I've asked for since the beginning of this situation, is the reasoning behind the appointment of this company that was so steadfast and new to appointments, and I haven't got it yet.
So we don't do our homework.
So there was a motion and there was a second. Okay, let's do a roll call.
Ask the goodness of the earth.
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes.
But we gotta go back to the.
Go back to the.
Mr. Barbetta?
No.
Ms. Gibbons?
No.
That's a basis. We're gonna vote.
Well, let's just hope we don't lose choice for something that's not coming.
Okay, well, there's two, there's two purchasing in the bill list.
The purchasing card, one of the things I would like to say I agree with, everything that was in there except the one, and that would be, I believe it was around $25. And I actually think that what I would like to see is that not down from $500 to $100.
Excuse me, which one are we discussing, purchasing card policy or the purchasing policy?
Purchase.
The P card.
The P card one, okay, thank you.
But let me follow explain, this is coming from an auditor who says that we should have policies in place, which obviously you should, and the Department of Community Affairs also says the same thing. Okay, so we have had some policies in place about purchasing, but the P card is something new. Finance notice just came out last week saying they have to have a policy in place, I attended a reference purchasing program last week, they say the same thing. So what I did is I drafted this policy, taken information that from a finance notice, a finance notice is something that DCA, Department of Community Affairs said that told me this was found about government mail changes. Okay, so I took their language and then the language of the updated policy, which just came out last week, another finance notice, put it together and came up with some information. I did the same thing with the purchasing policy. Our auditor gave me a copy of Winona Borough's policy, it's pretty much oil plate, I took that, massaged that, and also took and copied information out of the finance notice to put it here to put this into place. In both policies, I have in there that as a finance officer, I can make a recommendation on a change, like the mayor said, based on getting the approval from the finance committee. Okay, so like say if we wanted to make a change on different purchasing limits, or maybe say we want to alter from two cards to five cards or whatever, I can make the recommendation, the auditor can make the recommendation, but I won't dare change the policy unless the finance committee says so. And it doesn't necessarily have to come back to the governing body, because we're already voting on the policy itself, so it gives us some leeway that as things go along, we can make these changes. That's what it's all about, if it meets the auditing requirements, that's the crux of both of those programs. Of the two resolutions that we have there, I would like to see them passed tonight if possible. If there's any changes, then go back to the finance and we can make the detailed changes.
So the one is the Resolution 48218, and that is the procurement of the P card, right?
Yes.
That we're voting on right now. Okay, I'll make the necessary motion.
You said in this resolution, I didn't say.
Drop the card.
Or amount somewhere. Yeah, but Larry, we're not gonna, we don't necessarily, we're not voting on that, we're voting on the policy, and then the finance committee can sit down and go over that. Before any change can made, it has to be by the finance.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I already made the motion, I'll second.
So, Judd, if we, let's say we're gonna purchase something online, we can use this P card?
Yes, and we currently do use it.
Okay, and if we agree with purchasing the soccer balls tonight, as we talked about the last two meetings, we can purchase them over the internet with a P card?
Yeah, if you guys.
In the amount of over $3,300.
Right, you can over, when council votes on something like that at a meeting, you're overriding the purchasing policy, like you're all voting on it.
And we're going to, and within that motion, we're gonna say we're gonna be using the P card?
Yeah, but is there anything reason why they won't accept the purchase order, or?
Yeah, they don't, they do not.
Okay, so does it look good case that you would use the purchasing card?
Okay. Good, all right. All right, so there was a motion, there was a second, I believe we need to roll call this one.
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes. Then we have 49218, purchasing policies and procedures. Judd, you want to give a little background on that one as well?
This is pretty much the same thing. Pretty much the same thing, it's general procedures on how people, I say people, department heads, employees, you guys, fill out purchase orders, the sequence of how things go. It talks about certification of funds, it talks about emergency purchases, it just gives us some guidelines.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Roll call.
Any discussion on that?
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes.
I might add, and I'll direct this to Al, but remember Al, last year we went through, you know, we won this purchasing card, the auditor says you can't use charge cards and all this. It took us almost six months to go through the bureaucracy, we had to use Bank of America, all this stuff that we're waiting for, we finally get it. Local finance notice 2019-13 that just came out last week with some changes with the P card, also had a big segment in there, now we can use charge cards. After all that.
Okay.
My daughter Public Works got annoyed, use Home Depot for the tools or something, but it's an allowable thing now.
Okay.
Go figure, but, you know. Bill list.
Okay. You want to add a dollar so you don't miss the presentation? Yeah, roll call please.
On purchasing policy?
On the 49218.
We argued it.
We did it.
We made a motion, second, we ended.
No, you didn't. I have it. I'm putting it here.
50218, Aaron and I had a brief discussion, we're probably gonna hold off on this here.
Joe, bill list please. You mentioned about the bill list, so we'll do that on here.
Yeah.
Bigger plan.
Let me just, 50218, we're gonna hold off on this one here, this will be at the end of next meeting. This is gonna be done. Moving over to the bill list, we're gonna take a moment from our resolutions. Moving over to the bill list. Does anybody have any questions?
Make a motion to accept the bill list. In the amount of $224,200 and $36 in building on sections.
Second. Any further discussions? I'll save this one here for when I get to the next item. Roll call please.
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes. We have 51218, I need your statement on this one here. There is 51218, I am in conflict deeply with this one here, so I will say that as the applicant, I have. I'm not voting on anything.
You're talking, you're talking.
This man will be handing that to the president.
Okay, this is a resolution. This is Resolution 51-218 regarding the authorized issuance of a 10-year policy management permit for Joseph Venezia. I have one question here with regards to this. It said that whereas the city forester had reviewed the application submitted by Mr. Joe Venezia and finds it incomplete, have we gotten a report from the forester?
Not at this time.
Okay, and that was submitted to the forester?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna recommend we table this item until we get the forester to court. I've got another question about the application fee as well. It says the escrow fees will be submitted by the applicant. I thought the escrow fees have to be submitted before the approval. No, I think it's once approval is, once approval is given, then he has to, the escrow fees have to be put into effect. And if they are not, if they're not given, then. Right, then the permit's not issued. Okay. That's my understanding, am I right?
I'm sorry?
The escrow has to be satisfied before the permit is issued?
No, you, well, you authorize the permit to be issued before I physically issue the said permit to him, then the escrow must be paid before I. But you do authorize the.
And, and both.
Okay, and that would be, you received the bill from CME for the inspection. Right.
Who pays that?
Well, that's, that comes out of the escrow account. Comes out of the escrow. Yeah, okay. Is that it? So we're tabling that, correct?
Make a motion, second.
What do you want, second or do you want the motion? I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to table.
Okay, we'll second. Okay, we do a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Pased.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Upstayed.
I just have one question as the applicant, and that would be, what exactly is the forester going to be dealing for? He's gonna review the plan that I've given, correct?
I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not inside the four corners of this application process, but my understanding from what is even here is that the forester has to deem the, deem the application complete, and that, that's what has not happened, we've not heard back from the forester.
That's correct.
I think that's the issue for tonight.
Oh, you mean the forester doesn't do a physical inspection of the property?
I don't, I don't mean anything. I'm not inside the four corners of this application, I'm trying to interpret what is here, what we've received, what we haven't received.
Basically, we haven't received any reports from the forester.
Right.
Because I, I remember some of the foresters taking. A physical inspection of the property was done by the forester. When he was being charged $9 an hour.
Before when that was done, Al, I can tell you, and I've sat through some of those meetings in the past, when you were on council and I was not, and the issue was, some of those applicants did not in fact have a forester. They did not have a forest-prepared plan. And then we have strengthened that over the years, and my application comes with a thick packet plan that I paid dearly for to have prepared by the forester, and that is submitted, he's a licensed forester. And that pretty much takes a lot of the mystery out of what's going on, because quite frankly, the state is involved in overseeing. My plan that I've submitted has been stamped by the finance commission.
Right, okay, but.
So they said that I'm in full compliance, and they have stamped off the, you know. So the foresters are simply gonna.
And seeing what has happened?
See what my forester has done, and he's going to agree or not agree, but it's a very detailed plan with what I have in here.
Okay. So we also get a letter from finance saying?
That's within the plan.
Okay.
That's already in the plan.
All right. So you're bringing a new plan in, or this is the old plan?
The old, the new plan is already here.
Okay.
Linda has it in her possession.
Fine, okay.
I would appreciate it, just not pull apart, that's all, it's in a binder?
No, 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 no.
Okay, moving down, we have 52.
2018, the number's wrong, I'm sorry.
That's okay. 52218, awarding Jerry and Son Escavating for the resurfacing of Kentucky Avenue.
I'll make that motion.
Another second. Roll call please, are there any discussions? Pretty much our discussions have been in here. Roll call.
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes, and this has kind of already been touched on, but 53, 53218, we're going to submit the grant application for Beach and 12th Avenue.
I'll make that motion.
Are we gonna add Pacific Avenue?
No.
We have a little long there. There was a motion, a second, roll call please.
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes, we're gonna go also to 54 until the end. We've got the bill list. We have the meeting minutes of the March 14 regular meeting, and the April 11 regular meeting. Are there any additions or unchanges? Hearing none, somebody make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
The minutes for March 14, 2018, the regular meeting, and April 11, 2018, regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All right, any opposed? Government reports, we have the March 2018 minutes of the court, we have the April 2018 clerk's office, public works, tax collector, and the zoning office as a report. Somebody make a motion?
Somebody make a motion.
Second. Any discussions? One issue that I will make a discussion with, there is a property that's all the way down the end of Ninth Avenue, I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but the building needs to be knocked down.
Well, that comes under new buildings. Wayne, Wayne's got a report right over here.
He does, that's right. I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna go through the channel, but the bank's gonna have to comply and do a flipping out there.
That's not ours, that's his responsibility.
All in favor? All right, any opposed? Next, we have the committee reports, which is a soccer net purchase.
All right, you've got a packet. We've talked about this before, past couple meetings, and you have a, you have a packet of four, excuse me, three quotes, and the cheapest one is Ben Schaper Recreation. This is for a pair of soccer goals, which includes the hooks to fasten it to the ground, as well as the net, and sandbags as well. And this package was cheaper than buying the goals themselves.
So. This is gonna be done with a purchase on the P card?
This is through a purchase on the P card.
And this is the same company that said they wouldn't take our purchase order number, they only.
Correct.
C O D or credit card.
Right.
And how much is the total price again?
Says the delivery time is between four and six weeks. Mr. Barbetta, the quantity here is one additional pack, is that two goals? Two goals, yes. That's what I just wanted to say. Two goals, yes, yeah.
I say that we, before, while.
So I'd like to make a motion to purchase these, we have the P card.
And a second. Roll call please.
Mr. Barbetta? Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes.
So that means I will have to come in here and we'll have to purchase this, and Linda will have to purchase this? Here, right, okay. No problem, I just wanted to make sure I got the logistics out. You got it, one certified for this, Al. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I do.
Next, we have.
Get you the copy then, so, thank you.
Next, we have the.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dirt road grading. We haven't done this in at least a year. At least a year, I would say, the last time was done was in the early part of the spring, to the best of my recollection, as it was discussed. We have a couple of roads that I think in fact do need to be graded. One of them is right off of Route 50 all the way down the north end of, excuse me, the southern end of town, that would be Sixth Street. Sixth Street is what it's called. That needs to be done, Mr. Gonzalez has kind of made a formal complaint to me about it.
There's DGA on that, correct?
Yes, it needs to be regraded over. I think that's what the real issue is, Al, I didn't seem to need to have to put more material down. It's just a matter of, you know, when the plows go out there for the snow, it kind of helped to chew up the roads, because it was never really graded properly in the first place.
Any issues with the roads, when it deteriorates in the season, certain amount of that DGA material is lost. So you may have to replace some depending on what you actually have there.
We could use those millings.
You can't use millings.
For a puddle.
Yeah.
For a puddle, not to resurface the roadway, for a puddle.
It's not, you're regrading the surface, okay? And it's a dirt surface, it's not, it's not a macabre puddle.
That's correct. What I'm saying is, in time, if some of that happens to wear away, such as what was done all the way down here on Fifth Avenue, and two neighbors that I run into every single Sunday at the church have said to me that they're very pleased with what was done on Fifth Avenue. Actually, with the millings. So they just said, puddles, and they said that corrected the problem, that's a washout.
I thought we couldn't put millings on the ground because.
It's a road surface way.
It's a DP, a D E P puddle. With the finance.
So you can't use it, Larry, as a road surface, you could use it for puddles.
But if you only have a dirt road, you're putting millings on the dirt.
Do you have a hole, what's that thing?
Now, what's the difference between putting puddles on the Pacific Avenue?
Take that up to the governor and the commissioner, come take it up with me. All right, so we're gonna go with Sixth Street, right, Larry? And the other street that we did before, I think it's a D.
Fifth, Sixth, we did Honest John, the back portion of Honest John, the dirt portion of that.
Why is that need to be done?
This is the turnaround there where the, the truck trucks and the school buses have to turn around.
So how far down we can go?
We, we go to, excuse me, one second, we go to the end of that turnaround, which is just past the last house.
The last house that's on the.
On the Honest John, yeah. That's what we did prior.
So how many feet, that's a very minuscule amount.
It is.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we did, we got this, we did this before we did it in a package.
So let us do Sixth Street. Let's do the end of Honest John. We have Fifth, all the way down the end of Fifth, that seems to be problematic.
From the low end on Fifth to the end.
That would be the 1,009 feet of span between Askul and Assol. That would be that section there.
Yep.
And we have one other street, I would say probably what?
It was. But this is something that should have been done in a committee. I'm going to pressure to our former candidate, if you allow him to speak. What was the other, the other street that we did?
That we did?
Yeah.
We did Fifth, Sixth Street.
Linwood.
Linwood, we did, we touched on Linwood on the straight part, we didn't turn up Seventh, which Seventh, that part.
We did four or five.
We did Fifth, Sixth Street, the end of Honest John, Linwood. I believe that was it. Or no, we did, was it Sixteenth or Thirteenth? No, we didn't touch Sixteenth, Sixteenth doesn't need to be done. I can do a decent job on, but I can't, I can't pitch it up.
So with our equipment.
This is something that last year we did in a group package. We got a decent price for it, because we brought the equipment out one day, we did the whole thing. We have to find out, the last, last year he did not have a grader, but he told me he was in the process of purchasing a grader. If we can get the grader and the vibrant printer roller, that would be the ideal situation to take care of that.
Okay. All in one time. So we are moving forward with Sixth Street. We're moving forward with Fifth, the 1,000 foot, Sixth, Fifth.
Honest John, Linwood, and.
I would like to, I would like to include Linwood with Seventh Avenue. There is someone that lives down that end over there, and they go in out of there.
Where Linwood turns.
They climb it all the way down, Larry, and then you have to make a right, took not left, but made a right.
Yeah.
That needs to be graded also, that's got DGA material.
Well, that's, that's part of, that's part of the.
That's actually Seventh.
Like maybe Seventh, we actually did it as part of.
It will, it will include that Seventh Avenue portion with Linwood, okay? And what was the file, what did you say? You said one more.
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Okay. I would like to make a motion to have those roads resurfaced. I believe that we certainly have the availability of the funds within our public works line item. I'll make the necessary motion for the road through to just discuss.
Well, I think, and I agree.
Why don't you make a second and then we'll discuss.
I'll make a second.
Yeah, discuss.
I mean, I think that you're right, in fact, we probably do have the money there to do that. I think that we should at least get three fifths, three fifteens.
Oh, absolutely, we have to.
Get the three fifths, and then get this, whatever the lowest date is, we get that spun certified, and then.
Subject to the certification requirement.
Subject to the certification of funds.
There's a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Barbetta?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?